To order, City of Palm Coast, City Council Business Meeting. It is Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flood.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Holland here. Vice Mayor Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Branquino.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Howell.
Here.
All members are present. Thank you. We will now open up to public participation. This is a time limit for members of our community to come present before the council. You have up to three minutes. We ask that you state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin. These are on items not on the agenda for those that are new tonight that we'll be presenting to the council. We do ask for civility and respect in our hearings. So, you know, our policies do not allow for loud applause after speakers. There's not a lot of noise going on. We're making some decisions based on the best interest of the community. So, we would ask you to be respectful of that. But we're glad to see each of you here tonight, especially so many kids. Okay, so we'll open up to the public. Please present before the podium.
My name is Celia Pulisia. I live in Palm Coast and I am coming here to give a big thank you on behalf of Mr. Stephen Carr, also myself, Mary Kay Hayward, my girlfriend, that is taking care of her ill husband. Mr. Carr is helping a person relative to move from California and all those 500 residents and adjacent streets that are by Florida Park Drive. I have to appreciate that. Thank you to the mayor and the council and Mr. Carr coach, also and Mr. Morton. I appreciate you, sir, that we got the first step in the right direction, those signs of no track road. And we, I saw them today and I felt that is very positive for Florida Park Drive. It's the beginning of a good start for all those residents. They can not be here, but I just am appreciating on their behalf. Also, I want to appreciate Mr. Morton and also Ms. Lauren Johnston for my last request for the Florida Golf Course maintenance. It looks beautiful. Everything is being resolved. Mrs. Lauren and Mr. Morton receive, they should be applauded. I really appreciate that. It's so nice to see our city working for us when we respectfully ask for things. So, I appreciate that very much. One more thing is that I will be asking for something. We are in contact, the people on the waterfront in the Saltwater Canals with our Sheriff Patrol, Mr. Jeff Turner. He patrols our waters for safety for everybody and he is addressing those serious speeders within the canals. And so, he said he was going to be contacting the city about putting some, maybe some buoys or some signs because when he stopped the speeders, when we called them and copied them our videos, because we have got together owners on the waterfront and we take videos of the speeders. When he confronts them, many says that they were not aware there is a speed limit, a minimum wake or whatever it is maybe should be posted from the marina inside of the Saltwater Canals. So, he probably will be contacting you as well. Mr. Jeff Turner, he is J. Turner at FlaglerSheriff.com. His phone number is 437-4116 and he can be contacted there. I really appreciate all you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
As I said at the work session last week, I want to thank the city for stepping up and cleaning up the R section, especially with the mess that Klein Corporation left behind. And the city was gracious enough to have a meeting with myself and Councilman Boquino and the city manager Morton and representatives from the city. And we sat down like grownups and they listened and I know I walked away knowing a lot more than I did before. And I just want to publicly thank the city for giving up of their time to sit down and just not yes them to death, but actually resolve the situation. As a quick update, Klein Corporation, I personally wouldn't hire them, but they did do what they said they were going to do. They repaired all of the swells and they put grass in and they took away all their ugly equipment for the most part. And they did, and they did repave the streets that they dug up. So, it sort of looks like it did before, especially in the R section. But I, once again, I want to thank the city for giving up of their time. They have a lot more other issues to handle, but they did step up to the plate. So, Mayor, you can be proud of your city employees for what they did. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Peter Scholms, Palm Coast Little League. Greatest asset that we have at Palm Coast Little League are our children and our volunteers. Most people don't realize the next greatest asset is our relationship with the city. Indian Trails Sports Complex is an envy of many other Little Leagues. Just ask anybody who comes here to play any of our teams, participates in a tournament. We had one this past weekend. The coach the following morning couldn't get on Facebook fast enough to thank us for the way, our hospitality and the use of our fields and how wonderful they are. Over the years, the board directors for Palm Coast Little League have made it a point to be as self-sufficient as possible and not to ask much of the city unless there was time to ask for something. It's time to ask. We've been right around 600 kids every spring along with 400 kids every fall, close to 1,000 kids every year. We see what's on the horizon and we're going to continue to grow. We're bursting at the seams right now in Indian Trails due to the lack of fields. This has been a topic of conversation for the past few years and a lot of progress has been made over the past few weeks between Little League and the City of Palm Coast. And we believe it's going to lead to an even stronger partnership between the two of us. Our need for additional fields at Indian Trails can't be understated. Some of you already know, working with the city over the past few weeks has opened up the door for us to utilize the fields, the fairgrounds. And that is a fantastic first step, but really it's a temporary step. And I'll explain in a moment why. Our program is one that we've said for quite a while that we don't think sometimes the city takes enough credit for. I mean, this is a program the city should be very proud of as well. When I explain to other leagues, other coaches, other presidents, what we have as far as our relationship with the city goes, they shake their heads in envy. And we get recognized with very nice plaques when any of our teams go to state tournaments. Two of them are already on their way. And as a lot of us feel that those plaques should be sitting at the community center, not at our building. Should be for the whole community to see. This past weekend while hosting one of the tournaments, we got some great news. In 2020, we were awarded the 12U baseball state sectional tournament. We're going to have eight teams here from all corners of Florida. We didn't seek this tournament out. They came after us. Palm Coast's reputation is growing and growing and Indian Trails has a lot to do it. That is probably the biggest division, the most popular division, and it's going to be on television. Get ready to throw out the first pitch. In 2021, they want us to take a softball tournament. For that, we need two softball fields under one roof at Indian Trails. Three years ago, we had a chance to host a regional tournament that sends a team to Williamsport. We lost out and that's to Naples. Naples was their second choice. Palm Coast was his first. I know the future's bright. The communication is open now and I know if we keep doing this, we're not going to be the envy of Little Leagues in the area. We're going to be the envy of Little Leagues across the state.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Fred Lures, Palm Coast Little League. I'm fighting a little cold, so bear with me. I'd like to just give you the history of, some of the history of Palm Coast we established in 2000 when Palm Coast became a city. We had, we had two teams and we played at Holland Park. We built the building, storage and concession at Holland at no cost to the city. In 2005, we had about 12 or so teams. Indian Trails Sports Complex opened. Head of Parks Recreation came to us and gave us the keys for both parks. Their statement was, "The city has built these great fields, but we don't have enough people to use them." We are counting on Palm Coast Little League to grow and use them and grow we have. We built a 2,500 square foot meeting and storage facility at Indian Trails, no cost to the city. We obtained a $20,000 grant from Little League International to assist in a stop cap field improvements taken by the city a few years ago. I would say up till 2015, our communications with the city were ongoing quarterly and the council was kept well informed. Since then, it's been poor at best. You, the council, need to make sure you are well informed. Although I must say during last month or so, I am seeing some of the communication returning under the new city manager. I know tournaments have been important to you, but the out-of-towner who comes here and buys lunch and gas certainly does not compare with the parents of our children who are here 24/7 adding to the city's treasury. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
My name is William Warren. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I have been a resident of Palm Coast for 18 years and the father of five children and grandchild, all residents of Palm Coast. Currently, I serve as the vice president softball for Palm Coast Little League. I've had this position for three years. I inherited a program that was often referred to as a redheaded stepchild of Palm Coast Little League. Low turnout, high turnover. Most girls were good, would leave the program, look for better programs and teams, and the girls that struggled would leave since they would see no reason to get better. The first year ended with all three of our All-Star teams being soundly beaten. I heard many parents state that they would never play again. I was told by other parents, "We would never win anything and the program is a joke." I spoke to several board members and parents who promised this would never happen again while I was here. The last two years, I've spent my free time and family time driving the softball program for the league, making changes that were not always in the best interest of myself, my daughter or family, but were in the best interest of the league. I've spent time at back-to-school functions, parades, in the embarrassing of my kids handing out cards to girls and families in restaurants and stores. I have grown the program not just in size, but skill level. Last year, we sent the first ever softball team, our 10U girls, to the state tournament. This is not only, this year, not only did we send the same team to state tournament again, but the older juniors girls advanced as well. I have been told time and time again, the transformation of our league is incredible. Even our baseball coaches, when they come over and look are amazed at the difference in skill level and competitiveness that our league has. I have, have other leagues that once thought of as easy ones now find themselves beaten regularly by our teams. We do all this, play games, practice, host out-of-town teams on one field, one field for 150 girls. This season, we played two games a night during the week and played from 9:00 AM often until 8:00 PM on Saturdays to get our games in. Practice only happens before the season starts as we have no open time on the field. Weekdays are often played till 9:00 or 9:30 to get games played. So, we have 10-year-olds, 11-year-olds and 12-year-olds playing till 9:30 on school night. The high school girls usually end it before that. At 100 girls, the field is already at maximum capacity. At 150 girls, we are well over what we can play. In a world where we often see girls stop playing sports at the age of 12, I'm keeping them interested in playing. I ask that you help me give them someplace to play. Help us grow a program that is growing. I have a community that's excited about softball. I just need someplace for them to play. More fields means that we could play, practice and host tournaments. More fields means that maybe our girls don't leave town to play travel, but stay here and form teams in Palm Coast. More fields gives us more room to grow and for what is a growing league. Give us someplace for our daughters to play what they love. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Excuse me, one moment. Young ladies?
Girls.
Young girls, come on back here.
Up front.
Come up front here so everybody can see the banners. Turn around so the audience can see the banners.
Next speaker.
Alexis Sampcel, City of Palm Coast. My husband and I are just two of the hundreds of volunteers at Palm Coast Little League. We have two daughters, one on each of the teams that are going, each of the softball teams that are going to the state tournament this weekend. They couldn't be here tonight because they're up at Indian Trails practicing. Ashley was on the team with these girls that placed sixth in the state last year and this will be Lauren's first trip. Recently, my girls and I were riding our bikes through the sports complex during a soccer tournament and my younger daughter, she says, "Why does soccer get eight fields here and we have one field?" I didn't have an answer for her and I certainly wasn't going to tell her that there's 10 soccer fields at that sports complex. And then when I started looking at Google Maps and the city website of all the city parks, I found out and counted 21 soccer fields in the city. The girls have one field, two if you count Holland Park, but it's honestly unplayable most of the time due to lack of maintenance. Lauren's a rising sophomore at Metansus High School and played JV softball there this year and comes back to Little League to play in her free time. Ashley dreams of playing softball at Metansus one day and they both dream of playing college ball. Like William said, you know, help keep the girls in town and building friendships and these friendships with relationships. As a community, I think we can do better for our pirate and future pirate and future bulldog softball and baseball players and provide additional fields to help grow the game and develop players. The local Little League is where it starts for these kids to feed our high school team. So, I think we can be a good community partner to help the city and the schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Now, close up public comments. I'm going to address a few of the commenters before and then I'm going to ask Matt to update the council on your conversations with Lauren and a few of the representatives from the Little League and then I'll say a few words as well. Thank you, Celia, for coming here tonight. Matt, if you can have Commander Williams contact the new Marine Patrol about what their needs are as far as signage and coordinate that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. McDonald, I'm glad that your issues were resolved and addressed and thank you for bringing that to our attention. It's always good when our residents are out there keeping an eye on the beauty of our city. And then we'll go forward with the comments. Matt, if you could, just update the council on what has happened thus far. I, I know that on our last workshop, we asked our city staff to not only coordinate with the county, but come up with a full assessment of all the fields that we have within our city jurisdiction, work with all the organizations, including the other ones that do utilize the field, come up with a master calendar and schedule to see where the deficiencies lie and then obviously come up with a plan on how we move forward to add capacity in certain areas.
Yes, absolutely. So, thank you, Mayor, Council. We have met several times now with Little League. We also hosted a meeting with the county administration, Jerry Cameron, and their parks director. And as they mentioned tonight, we did get some access to practice fields for both softball and baseball. We've also committed, we're putting together our memorandum of understanding with the county to help on some joint maintenance so those fields are in good quality shape and as playable as possible. We've also worked on trying to identify and those conversations are ongoing, some playability enhancements for our Little League and softball, including maybe some fencing removal, some reorientation of the fields at Indian Trails and some rescheduling. We conducted a site visit last week, Lauren, myself, some of our park supervisors and some other city staff to kind of really get a sense of what assets we had, how we could move them around. And we've been having those discussions and we'll continue to have them with the Little League folks to try to identify how we can increase playability, including overflow, parking access, things that we can help again create more space. The plan you're talking about as far as the total overall field asset attainment and scheduling those assets are actually being put into place. I just got the draft report today and that went through our city. We're in the process now of sharing that with Little League and softball to see what provisions of that we can take action on immediately, figure out what the best course of actions are and of course bring some of the higher level items back to council for discussion and review.
Also, can you bring back during that process of park impact fees, what's being paid into it, what we have remaining in that account and what those funds are allocated for? And I say that because as we're having these conversations, we need to be looking at the whole picture. We are a growing city. There's no doubt that we're going to continue to grow. There's no doubt that we need to invest in the next generation and also acknowledge the thousands of hours that our volunteers put in to the next generation and our children. I certainly appreciate it. I grew up where my father coached girls softball in Poughkeepsie, New York. You know, it was something that changed my life, frankly. It was, it was a very friendly time in my life. It's one that I, I reminded of often. My sisters and I talk about it. So, there is no doubt that we need to acknowledge not only the investment that you make as residents into our next generation, but we need to also do everything in our power to ensure that we have enough capacity to make, make it successful. So, we're going to do everything we can moving forward. I agree with you that communication needs to improve. It needs to be better. It's not been where it should be and I'm looking forward, Matt and I have discussed this at length, to have not only those regular conversations, but really coming up with a very comprehensive approach and a plan moving forward. So, I want to thank you for coming out tonight and, and much success to you and, and we look forward to working collaboratively in the future. Thank you. Okay. We will now move to agenda item number E, which are the minutes approval of the June 18th, 2019 business meeting and the minutes of the June 25th, 2019 workshop meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number F2 is a proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. It's kind of appropriate having everyone here tonight. Vice Mayor Clufus will be presenting and our team will be receiving.
Whereas Parks and Recreation Systems are dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for millions of residents in communities around the world through recreation programming, leisure activities and conservation efforts. And whereas parks, recreation activities and leisure experiences provide opportunities for young people to live, grow and develop into contributing members of society. And whereas parks, recreation activities and leisure experiences create lifelines and continuous life experiences for older members of the community. And whereas parks, recreation activities and leisure experiences generate opportunities for people to come together and experience a sense of community. And whereas parks, recreation activities and leisure experiences pay dividends to communities by attracting businesses, jobs and increasing house values. And whereas the City of Palm Coast recognizes the vital contributions of employees and volunteers in parks and recreation facilities. And whereas these dedicated supporters keep, keep parks clean and safe for visitors. They organize youth activities, provide educational programming on health, nutrition, first aid and gardening. They also advocate for more open space and better trails. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Palm Coast does hereby proclaim the month of July 2019 as Parks and Recreation Month. And be it further resolved that we hereby request that during Parks and Recreation Month, that all citizens enjoy what their community has to offer by taking part in their favorite sports, visiting the outdoors and spending time with family and friends while relaxing. Adopted this second day of July 2019, City of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor Melissa Holland.
Lauren, would you like to present?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This July, we want to celebrate everything that makes our field fun, joyful and full of excitement. This year's theme for Parks and Recreation Month is Game On. We have a few events that I'd like to highlight for every age and ability. Here are some that you don't want to miss. The fireworks in the park event that's scheduled for tomorrow evening. Our food truck Tuesday, a new adaptive recreation program, a movie and pizza party. We have a youth fishing derby and then our annual tour to Palm Coast. If you also like to make a trip out to the sports complex, I know Little League has some All-Star Games going on as well. So, we hope to see you at our events. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Okay. Agenda item number 23 is a proclamation on the opioid task force. I, Councilmember Cuff, will be presenting. I would ask those in the audience receiving to please come up.
Whereas Flagler County in the state of Florida is in the middle of a public health and safety crisis caused by the opioid epidemic and characterized by an alarming rate of opioid overdose deaths. And whereas opioid overdoses have recently claimed the lives of far too many Flagler County residents. And whereas the National Safety Council reported on January 14th, 2019, that for the first time, America- time, Americans were more likely to die from an accidental opioid overdose than from a motor vehicle crash. And whereas opioid overdoses can be prevented and lives can be saved. And whereas we recognize that substance use disorder is a disease that individuals with substance use disorder come from diverse backgrounds and live in every part of our state, and furthermore, that recovery from substance use disorder is possible. And whereas the toll that substance use disorder takes on individual families, friends, and communities must drive us to do all that we can to reduce its impact and help Flagler County residents lead healthy, successful, and productive lives. And whereas we must come together to build on the existing work and successful initiatives of state agencies, stakeholder coalitions, and community partners to contain the opioid epidemic. And whereas Flagler County needs a comprehensive plan to address opioid misuse and reduce overdose deaths in our county. And whereas the purpose of the task force is to develop, approve, and implement a comprehensive opioid action plan to, one, prevent the further spread of the opioid crisis, two, treat and promote the recovery of individuals with opioid use disorder, and three, respond effectively to avert opioid overdose deaths. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Palm Coast, that they hereby proclaim July 2019 as Opioid Awareness Month. And the Flagler County Opioid Task Force is recognized as playing a necessary function in the opioid crisis, and urge all citizens, interest groups, and affected persons to join with us in promoting the awareness and prevention of the opioid crisis in our community during the month of July, and to take an active role in the fight to end opioid addiction and overdose. Signed this second day of July 2019, City of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor Melissa Holland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Felbar, along with Commissioner Joe Mullins and Pastor Charles Solano, one of the founding members of the Opioid Task Force for Flagler County. We're in the midst of growing this group, reaching out to each and every community to be actively part of this task force. Asking this council a couple of things. One, to be aware of what we're doing. Two, if possible, to appoint a liaison from the council to the task force, so the council can be kept up to date on what's going on. This is extremely important as we move on. We are in the midst of developing what they call an RCO, a Recovery Community Organization, which the Opioid Task Force will be the central part of, which will gather the community together, everybody that's part of the recovery landscape. We need active participation from all elements of our government to be part of this, to make this successful. This is something that a lot of people don't want to admit as part of what's going on and is going on in our community, but we know that ought to be true. As a for instance, just given a note today with no names mentioned, overdose 19-61462, 2.7 miles from our location right here, was found in a park unconscious, laying in his own vomit. EMS arrived to give him a dose of Narcan, transported him to Advent Health, where vital signs were good. This was a save, but they're not always a save. As pointed out previously, we know that the first death in our community a year ago was not in some back alley, was not in some bad neighborhood. It was in a guarded gated community. The opioid epidemic has no boundaries. There is no fence it can't go over. There is no guarded community it can't enter. We need the community's support in getting ahead of the game, getting far ahead of the game before we fall too far behind. So, again, we thank you for this acknowledgement, but we do ask your participation.
Thank you, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Does anybody else want to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for, Mayor Holland and Council. My name's Kathy Dalton, and my son passed away from an overdose on August 8th, 2016. He wasn't in our county, but for the first two years, I just sat and looked at the walls, and then I decided I'm going to do something so no other mother has to go through the nightmare that I've gone through. And personally, I carry Narcan, and if I saw anyone overdosing, I would save their life. And we just want to, I'm on the education committee of the Opioid Task Force. Our ultimate goal is to teach the youth, not to, you know, to say no to drugs. There's really no programs anymore in our schools to teach them, and that's our goal right now. Plus, we're at all the events. We have literature on our table and just try to spread the word, and I just want to say thank you for recognizing all of us.
Thank you very much. Sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you beat me on the overdose yesterday. But we have a problem in this county. The President of the United States recognizes it. The Santos, our governor, recognizes it. We have the highest suicide rate of any county in Florida. It's all like a circle. It revolves around the drugs, it involves around suicide, it involves around alcohol. Eighty percent of suicides, alcohol's involved. I have a friend of a friend, 74-year-old female, overdosed under suspicious circumstances, but, you know, it affects not everyone, and also kids 12-years-old now. I mean, that didn't happen when I was a teenager. But that's, we're trying to educate people, and we really need the community's support, and it's not going away any soon. A lot of drug called fentanyl, which can be cut out of patches given by prescription, but most of it's coming from China, not condoned by the Chinese government. They shoot and kill their drug dealers. They don't mess around, but it's all coming, a lot of it's coming in through the mail. Now, a lot's coming through Mexico, and it's coming here. I have a friend's 21-year-old son. He had a couple of beers for his birthday, had a couple hits of pot. It was laced with fentanyl. He overdosed, 21-years-old. Now, the fire department and police here have Narcan, and they were able to revive him. But the other problem that we need to educate and help, we're going to need help with, is that when they get out of the hospital, they got nowhere to go, and a lot will revert back to the old habits. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We'll be in touch about a liaison. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
Okay. Next is our consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make any public comment on agenda item number G4? Please do so at this time. If you cannot close public comment, take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve the consent.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Other business. H5 is ratify firefighter volunteer pension board's appointment of the fifth member.
The pension board, as you know, you make two appointments. There's an election for another two. The board comes together and they vote for a fifth member. Robert Schroeder has served as their fifth member for two terms, I believe, and they chose him again.
Okay. So, we just have to ratify that?
You just have to say motion to.
Can I have a motion to ratify that, please?
I will make a motion to ratify his position.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number H6 is appoint two alternates to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board. Kate, do we just mark the?
Yes, just mark your top two. Then, I didn't put a header in there, but the numbers mean what district they're from. And those are your choices, and then we'll just pass them down.
I make a comment here. My only concern here is that I think that if we're going to vote on these people, I don't know them from boot, other than just a little quick one-sentence line there. Is there a way in the future when we have to do this to get a briefing on these folks so that we can see who is more qualified than another?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, also, we can ask them to be here as well to answer any questions, Jack. If we can request that.
Yeah, well, just as long as we get a little bio sheet.
I'm just saying, like, we can request that they attend during the appointment process. That's sometimes helpful.
Yeah.
So, okay. Thank you.
The two appointments are Mr. Charles Lemon and Mr. Thomas Olzner.
Okay. Can I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion that we accept those two to the planning board.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number I is public participation. This is a time, if you've not spoken at the beginning of the meeting, we open up to the public to speak at the end of the meeting on items not on the agenda. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I'd like to thank Carl, who sits back there. Sat next to me at the workshop and explained to me about the, what's happening with Beltier construction, you know, doing the roadway and everything, and how things are moving in sections, different times and everything, which I figured out anyway, but I just wanted an idea of a sense of when, you know, Beltier would be worked on, you know, and what parts of Beltier be worked on and all of that. And he did a magnanimous job sitting next to me, talking to me about it. And I always ask about it, whether they, when are they going to start working on Beltier? Because I live along Beltier. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, George Mail, Palm Coast. Number one, I would ask the members at the dais at times, bring the microphone closer to you when you speak. Sometimes it's harder to hear. Number two, hearing the Little League speak, telling about how many soccer fields there are. And I would just ask, maybe look into if the soccer fields are not being utilized to their maximum. Maybe we can turn some soccer fields into Little League if that is more useful. But I don't know, but maybe that can be looked into. And the third thing I saw on News 6 today, they interviewed a woman who was a paralegal in the Flagler School Board and in one of the schools here in Rimfire School, as a matter of fact, and talking about how, she was saying she makes $18,000 a year and can't afford to live. And she was just asking if she could even make poverty-level wages. When have you ever heard anybody ask, "Could I at least make poverty-level wages?" So, I know we have no sway on what the school board does and school board manners, but just thinking of, from now on, when we ask companies to move in here, we would probably welcome every company that would want to move to Palm Coast. But we could also see what they are going to pay their employees, because if this is what it's going to become, then the workforce housing that we're building will definitely not be enough, and we're going to need more of that. So, I just look at what our status is, and hopefully, we can bring in companies that provide good wages. And if we have any discussions with the school board, how is it that a paralegal that works for our schools only makes that much, that little money? I know, I wouldn't do that job. She has said how she's been harassed, spat on, called names, and everything else. That money does not do justice to that woman for what she has to do. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Close public comment. Thank you for your kind words, Louis. We will speak into the mic more, George, and that is part of the process for the Little League. We're going to do an assessment of all of our fields, how they're utilized, how often they're utilized. We're going to get a big picture, and then we're going to come up with a strategic plan on how to tackle those fields. And, you know, obviously, you stated we don't have any governance over the school district, nor do we have it over their budget. It's certainly a sad case when you hear that story, and it's something we always try to look at, is bring high-paying jobs here. So, it's important. Okay. We'll now go to discussion by City Council of matters not on the agenda. Councilmember Cuff.
Just take a moment to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July. For those of you that are planning on celebrating in your neighborhoods, I would ask that you keep in mind your neighbors, the humans who may suffer from PTSD, and the four-legged neighbors who also do not appreciate hours of fireworks, explosions, but in any event, enjoy the holiday and keep it happy and safe. Thank you. That's all I have to.
Councilmember Quinon.
Same thing. Happy Fourth of July, and don't forget, we're going to have fireworks here tomorrow, and please come and join us. It's going to be nice, that time, nice time. Bring the kids. They're going to like it. Thanks, because of the fireworks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Clufus.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I wanted to let all the children in the audience know how great of, set of role models that you have in front of you today. These are parents and volunteers that are all working together to try to move our community forward. This is a rare occurrence, so make sure that you respect those who are doing the right thing, and they are advocating on your behalf. Second, I'm also very encouraged by the better bandwidth and communication from our Parks and Recreation Department and with our city manager. I was also engaged not only with several individuals from the audience, but also individuals from other sports communities, and it's been a 180-degree turn over the last several months, and more specifically, even this last month. So, thank you very much to everyone here, and thank you to our staff making us better.
I want to wish everybody a safe Fourth of July. If you go to the beach, watch the rip currents, and here's a little tip for you. I used to carry, when I ran ocean rescue in Jacksonville, Pedialyte in my lifeguard truck. That's a quick rebound for heat exhaustion. And I also carried Benadryl. While I couldn't distribute the Benadryl somehow or other, they were found in the sand, you know. Wrapped, you know. And the other thing is, get yourself a little spray bottle and mix it with 50% rubbing alcohol and 50% white vinegar, and that's what we use for jellyfish things. So, you're all set. And other than that, enjoy tomorrow.
Good advice. Thank you. I have nothing other than to reiterate what we talked about earlier. I think it's interesting that we had an opioid task force presentation the same time we had Parks and Rec. There is a direct correlation with, obviously, the involvement of our youth, the volunteers in our athletic leagues, our, you know, our arts, our music, everything that goes along with building a well-rounded community. So, it has not escaped us, and I'm looking forward to having conversations moving forward. We really cannot thank you enough. It's really important. So, thank you. And that's all I have. So, Mr. Reichman, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Morton?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I move we adjourn our meeting.